Women overseas who are protecting our great country and the many, many women in uniform, both past and present, who have fought for the freedoms that we have today, that we get to experience and enjoy as American citizens. We thank you for our local leaders and our first responders, our volunteer firemen, our full-time firemen, our law enforcement, our EMS personnel, all of our state officials who keep us safe as we navigate through these uncharted times and uncharted territories with the COVID-19. We ask that you keep everyone safe and out of harms way and see that they get home to their families at the end of the day. In your name we pray. Amen. This time I'd like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call to order the Tuesday, April 28th meeting of the Hart County Board of Commissioners. This is our regularly scheduled meeting. I'd like to welcome those of you who are watching at home. We do have a few folks in the audience here. As you can see, we're practicing social distancing and we want to thank the city of Hart County officials and the mayor and council for allowing us to use their meeting quarters tonight so that we can lead by example. First item of business tonight will be to approve the agenda. Cheryl, any changes to the agenda?
No change.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approve the minutes of the previous meetings because we have emergency meeting minutes in here. We need to take those separately, so let's start with the March 10th regular meeting minutes. There are no changes because I get a motion to approve.
So move.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Carter, second by Commissioner Teasley to approve the March 10th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next one will be the March 18th call meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes if everything's in order with everybody?
I'm making a motion we approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Carter to approve those minutes on the March 18th call meeting. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. The next two are emergency meetings and we need to make sure, I know we got the top head, we should add the word reason there because per the Georgia Open Records of the meetings law, we got to state in the minutes as to why the reason was. So if we just put reason out there on those two, if everybody's okay with those two meeting minutes, could I get a motion that we approve the March 24th, 2020 emergency meeting and the April 3rd emergency meeting with those changes on the reason?
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is remarks by invited guests, committees, and authorities. We don't have anyone. Reports by constitutional officers and department heads. Kim, you got anything for Walter? Okay. County administrators report.
Just one thing. I want to kind of bring up the data reports on the COVID-19 stuff and try to explain it to the folks. These are cumulative figures. All the numbers you see in these reports are from the start, when they started counting people through the day, seven o'clock or whatever reports you're looking at. They're not active people with viruses in the county. In other words, there's not nine active people that's got the virus in Hart County at this time. So they never take them off. They put them on, but they never come off. And the other report I'd like to say is the one I get every day from Merch and Angela. This is the most important thing. If you look at the bottom of this thing, you'll see the hospital bed space. This was the whole purpose of all the isolation and staying at home and all that was to control the flatten the curve of the growth of patients. And if you'll see, we're in pretty good shape. We've got 30, we're not using 31% of the ER capacity or around 69 to 65% of the ICU beds and the general hospital beds. So there's plenty of bed space throughout the state right now. And that's the main thing we're looking at is if we get a spike of sick people having a place to put them, that's holding real good right now. And I just want to get that across to people because a lot of times they keep seeing numbers getting higher and higher on that data report and it calls a little penny. Honestly, it's just their numbers are real good. Ours are, even the other counties around us, they're testing more and more people every day. The more people you test, the more positive you're going to get. So I just want to alarm people when more positive shows up because they're going to find more because they're testing 10 times as many people.
I got a question. I read the other day where, I'm not going to say what county, but they had, I don't remember, 10, 12, 13, I don't remember the number of people that had tested positive in a nursing home, but they had no symptoms.
Correct. You can be positive without symptoms. That's correct.
I was curious about that.
Right. And the National Guard, part of the governor's incentive was National Guard evaluation teams went to every nursing home in the state, tested every nursing home patient and went back a week later and retested them again. So you're going to find more positives that way. Same way, they had three driving clinics yesterday, all they did drive through if you're going to be tested. And so they're testing thousands of people every day, so you're going to get a lot more positives show up. Some of them may not even have any symptoms. Very few are actually admitted to a hospital. Most of them are at home. But that's the way these graphs work. I just want people to understand it.
One data point that would really be good to put on here is the number of people who have recovered by region. You took those cases out and had active cases and then recovered.
I agree with you.
That would, I think, knock a lot of the
Right.
Antico
And I would say, and if you look at percentage wise, what we're sitting at right now for Hart County, in other words, .0003% of the population has been diagnosed with it. Statewide, it's .002%. In the whole United States, it's .003% of the population. So it's less than a third of the population of any county or state or the nation that's been diagnosed with this. That's all I have.
Okay. I want to go back on the page break. I missed the meeting minutes. We need to go back and approve the April 13th called meeting minutes. I missed that. It's up at the top here.
I'm making a motion we approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
So we didn't do emergency meetings today?
We did. We did. And we made a clarification. I mean, a change to that puts a reason at the top, so.
We didn't have any.
Okay. Chairman's report. We'll get into financial report for the month of March. Looking at our revenues, actual revenues came in at $693,044. You can see that's in the red. That's the reason it's there is because the variance, the target's greater than 3%. It's nothing to get alarmed about because our main revenue driver is real property taxes. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get down to that category. Actual expenses were in the yellow. They were just below 3% of the target of $1,355,566. But we've had some good months before. You can see the previous three months of the fiscal year, two of them were in the red and one was in the green, but overall, three are green and two are red and one yellow. So our expenses are falling in line with the budget. We're actually $16,827 below target, whereas our revenues are $3,299,375,000 above target. That will continue to go down as the year progresses. Looking at our key revenue drivers, real property taxes, the target's $470,000 a month if you were to average it out, but because property taxes are due in December of this year, of last year, for this year, you can see their revenues were significantly higher in December at 2.6 million and then in January at 1.8 million. For the month of March, we took in $63,557. It's red, but overall, real property taxes as a whole are way above budget and they'll continue to drop as the year goes forward. LOST, which is a sales tax, local option sales tax used to reduce the mileage rate, our budgeted target is $188,000 per month. We share this with the municipalities and you can see we came in in March at $202,925. This is one where we could see, because of the COVID-19, we could see some degradation in this, so this is one that's vulnerable. Based on what we've seen at Home Depot and Lowe's, just observing the parking lots, I don't know that we'll see any negative impacts, but we'll know in next month. EMS fees, target's $95,800. We came in at $84,159. Overall, EMS fees are below target at $54,699 year-to-date. Vehicle title fee, we've talked about this all along, $62,000 is our target. We came in at $89,182. People are continuing to still buy cars and year-to-date, we're $221,000 above budget. So a lot of people are still buying cars. That's a sign of a strong economy. Couple of other things I wanted to talk about under Chairman's report. I want to thank everybody for their efforts. I know we've been through some trying times. This is uncharted territory for all of us, but Hart County should be proud of themselves right now for the number of cases that we've had and the willingness to comply with things that have been put in place. This is for the public good, not for individuals. And yet, our governor's taken a lot of heat for allowing some businesses to open up. I want to just specify that in his order last week, the option to open was given to the hair salons, the barber shops, nail salons, those kind of businesses. They were not mandated that they open, but if they did open and it was a choice of the business owner, there were protocols that were put in place. And this week, we saw the restaurants were allowed to start opening back up. Support your local businesses. Some of these folks are struggling and, you know, they're here to, they pay taxes in Hart County as well. And I want to give us, we do a lot. Terrell's done a phenomenal job in this COVID-19. We're not through it yet, but he's done a really good job of keeping everybody up to date and keeping us up to date. A lot of time spent on conference calls, a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that the general public doesn't see, some very detailed plans, even has backup for himself in Dan Yergin. And yes, I can't say enough about the good job that he's done in this. Appreciate all your efforts. We tell you that a lot and we mean it, we're not just talking. That's all I've got under Chairman's report, Commissioners' reports.
I'd also like to thank Terrell for the job he does as county administrator, our local law enforcement, Sheriff's Department first responders, EMS, Fire Department, our volunteer fire department, and I appreciate the job that all our county employers are doing at this time and I just appreciate it. And that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
District 3.
Yes, sir. I'd also like to recognize our local emergency workers, but also I want to give a big thank you to the folks with the Hart County Botanical Gardens. My wife and I, you know, through this shelter-in-place thing, went to a restaurant, picked up an order to go, went to the Elberton Highway Complex and had our little picnic out there under the shelter and then my wife says, "Let's go to the botanical gardens." And before you start stereotyping me or profiling me as somebody that hangs around a botanical garden, I'm not that guy. But during this shelter-in-place, we want to do all we can do to get along with each other, so I proceeded to go to the botanical garden. But I just want to say, these folks have done a tremendous job in their efforts of this, first, just the ambiance of the botanical gardens. You walk in and they have recognized, they put a spirit garden there to recognize our frontliners on this COVID-19. And I thought that was very special of them to recognize that. And I would also suggest, if you're tired of the politics noise, the COVID-19 noise, to, it's very therapeutic to just go out there and listen to the birds sing and the aroma of the flowers and it's a stress reliever. I mean, it can, and so if we want to relieve our stress or whatever, and that can help boost your immune system, they say, so it's all good. So I would encourage you to go out there and look at the Hart County Botanical Gardens. Those folks have done a tremendous job. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sounds like you didn't know what you've been missing all this time.
I've been before, but it was just a different atmosphere.
District 4.
Yeah, I want to reiterate what you said about the people out here. The people in this county has done a real good job. I appreciate your patience to dealing with this and just like the chairman said, and just like the marshal said, it's been trying time for all of us. And I know that it's been trying time for me and I know it has for these boys, having to do what we had to do and I know it has at state level, I know it has at Terrell level. It's not easy trying to tell people they can't go out and make a living. That's just wrong any way you look at it, but sometimes things have to happen. That's all I got to say, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move on into old business out of 12A, bid awards for ambulance. We received two bids, one from emergency vehicle sales out of Elberton, Georgia at $149,935. No exceptions to specifications. ETR LLC out of Stanford, Florida for $164,377 with some minor exceptions to the specifications. Recommendation from the county administrators to go with a low bidder emergency vehicle sales out of Elberton. Can I get a motion that we do that?
I make a motion we go with emergency vehicle sales.
Motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Teasley. Terrell, anything you want to add to that?
No, that's, we've got, we've had those brand trucks for close to 35 years and never had a problem with any of them.
All right. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is revision of Appendix A of no-through truck ordinance. This will be the second reading. We're going to add a few roads to that that would include White Wood Road, Judd Cole Road, Rockdale Road, Burt Moorhead, Bailey's Garage Road, and Deer Run Lane. Can I get a motion to take this as a second reading, adding these roads to the no-through truck ordinance?
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
Second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Little League contract discussion. Little League, just kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up because they do have a contract with the county for facility use. Right now, nothing's happening. They're planning on having a Little League board. I talked to A.J. Kelly. They're planning on having a meeting Sunday night to talk about their plans, but I just want to let everybody know that that contract may run over past July. I don't think anybody's got a problem with that. If they ever get their season started, we'll address it then, but if anybody's got a problem, we just need to let them know. I don't think anybody does, but.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we just go ahead and extend it till, if there's no conflicts till November or whatever, or through the rest of the year? Is there a conflict?
The only thing would be when does football season start up as far as practicing? I mean, that would be the only place I could see a conflict.
The executive committee will be meeting this week and then the whole board will be meeting.
Football. Okay.
Any more to that?
I don't foresee them going into August. I think they'll be done by July, but if you want.
I'll just say, you know, make a motion as needed. I mean, until, you know, I mean.
If you want to go ahead and make that, we'll go and do it. Now, whether I have their answer.
I'm making a motion to allow Little League to proceed with an extension of their contract as needed.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer to allow Little League to continue their season as needed, second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is timber permits discussion for new regulations. Walter and Kim have put together some changes to our ordinance because we are not compliant with the new regulations coming from the state. I would just ask that everybody take a look at this. I know Commissioner Sayer and I've talked about this. I've talked to Walter and Kim today, but just take a look at it and any changes you want to see made, just get that to them and then we'll take it as a first reading at our next meeting. Everybody's good with that, instead of getting bogged down in the details tonight. All right, so we won't need to take any action on that. Moving on into new business out of 13A, request to bid L-MIG roads. The chairman and I talked about this too, with oil prices coming down, now's the time to be looking at this. We're fortunate to be doing two years' worth of paving, hopefully in an economically friendly atmosphere. Roads that we're looking to do, that we've already voted on, Rockdale Road, Yacht Club Road, McCurley Road, Memorial Road, Langford Road, Cleveland Mill Road, Lake Club Drive, Ben Maxwell Road, and Bethany Bowersville Road Part II. There are some of these roads will be certain sections of, so. Request is to go ahead and go out for bid with these roads. Can I get a motion that we do that?
I make a motion that we go ahead and pursue these bids.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
Second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion?
Anything that needs to be changed? You changed that on there?
Yeah, I got it changed on the main copy on the desk. And just let me interject here, in the contract, it says that we can add roads to this if we have money at the same price. So we covered it. And we did last year. We added, last paving, we added two or three roads to it.
So we're hoping to be able to take the taxpayer money and get more bang for our buck this year, so. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion on road paving? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is request to bid cheerleading football uniforms and sports Right now, we're going to move forward if this is going to happen in preparation for the upcoming season. Can I get a motion that we move forward with putting this out for bids?
I make a motion.
A motion by Commissioner Sayer. Is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion?
I got a question. It may not be doable, but it's still a question. When we put these out for bids right here, we're looking at 100, 150 uniforms.
At least.
If we added the basketball season to that, it may be too far out, but it's not going to be by two more months before we're getting bids on those, right? Wouldn't you be able to get a lot better price if you added another 100, 150 uniforms in there for basketball?
Well, theoretically, you should. They're different uniforms, but I mean, if you're still selling a bulk package, you probably make it a better price.
I think it's something to look into.
If you hold the price as long as.
Well, that's, that'd be the only problem. And if something come up and they couldn't hold the price, then, you know, we may have to go back and look at it again, but you might get a good price by doing it.
That's right.
Because if you got the specification and you could put it out there, I mean, you're not going to know your numbers, you're not going to know your sizes.
Well, we never knew, really.
Well, maybe you kind of have an idea in numbers, but.
It's just ball market numbers from previous seasons.
Next year, it'll honor.
Football and cheerleading.
He's talking about basketball.
Basketball, we just dumped up. What's the question again?
Wants to add basketball uniforms with this bid packet, see if you can get better prices.
Basically, we should put the same bid document out that we would.
Yeah. And tell them this is coming up and would you like to bid on that? You probably, you might get a much better deal.
Could I get, if that's what we want to do, can I get amended motion to amend it second? About amending the motion?
I want to say go to.
Putting the basketball in there.
See if we get a better price.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to include basketball.
Yeah, second.
I already have amended motion, amended second to.
He's got a question right there.
Increase, I mean, to add the basketball uniforms to it, yes.
You already did that on the pictures.
Okay. We're just talking about uniforms.
Both seasons.
So on the pictures, this covers basketball season and football season. There you go.
But this wants to add the uniforms, amended motion second was for, so.
Okay, but I do have another question. And stipulations, are there any timeline of how long these prices are guaranteed on our?
Yeah, we'll have to add that into the contract.
That would have to be changed.
Add that into the bid package.
Right. Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Next I want to talk about, and I don't think we're going to take any action, but just want people to know that we, county back in the early 2000s adopted some emergency management ordinances and one of them is price gouging to protect consumers from being, seeing high prices for no reason at all. Just want to remind everybody that's still in effect as we move through this pandemic. If anybody has anything or recognizes where there could be some issues there, if you'll let us know, we'll definitely look into it. If we need to get the Attorney General's Office involved to investigate, we'll be more than happy to do that. Anybody have anything they want to add on that? There's been a lot of talk and a lot of people asking questions about gas prices. That's one of the reasons why we put this on here to discuss, but we're not aware of anything going on like that, but I did want to let everybody know just as a reassurance that that is out there. Anybody have anything? If not, we'll move on to public comment. Unfortunately, we don't, I don't know if anybody has any public comments here. If you're at home and you do have questions or something for public comment, if you'll submit them to the county administrator, we will get you an answer. This is the way we have tried to handle public comment since we've been in this situation with these emergency called meetings and other things. But contact Terrell or one of us and we will get you an answer. With that being said, we'll move on to executive session for litigation.
Can I say one thing?
You can.
I should have said this in commission. But something that I've seen that's, I guess problematic is the inability of a lot of people in this county to get Atlanta news and what's got going on. I can tell you more about what's going on in Carolina and Georgia. I just want to put that out there. We might need to write another letter or try to jack them up so they get a little faster.
It's been about three weeks. It's been about three weeks since we sent a letter to them.
Well, you know, I've got some calls about that as well from some people like in my district and, you know, I know there's some work in progress, but it might not hurt to write a letter, Mr. Chairman.
Every county sent a letter here about three, four weeks ago.
I knew we talked about it a long ago. It really sticks out now.
Doug Collins was involved with the letter too. He'd sent a letter to them going all out.
So since we've already done that, there's really no need, it's just redundancy right now?
I mean, it's, it's just been pushed from the federal level. It's out of our control.
But we do appreciate what Congressman Collins has done to try to get this going. Anything else? Not, can I get a motion, we go into executive session for litigation?
Move.
I'm making a motion. Already, is that what you said?
I said, so move.
Okay, I'll second.
Come out there, deal.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Sayer. I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Sayer, that we go into executive session for litigation. All right.